Hello, good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 20th, 2023, meeting of the Wayzetta Planning Commission. I hereby call the meeting to order. My name is Larissa Stockton and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. I have a few words about how to participate in this evening's meeting. Meeting ID for this evening is 838-1310-9813. Passcode is 285253. Members of the public may attend the Planning Commission meeting in person or watch and listen remotely by viewing the meeting on Channel 8 WCTV and at the city's website at wayzetta.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person at the meeting in advance or by logging into the Zoom call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you'll be seen and heard in our council chambers and the cable channel. You'll be asked to unmute and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. The city encourages comments and questions about items on the agenda and, when possible, requests that you submit them in advance by emailing publiccomment@wayzetta.org, calling city staff at 952-404-5323, or mailing Wayzetta City Hall at 600 Rice Street East, Wayzetta, Minnesota, 55391. Attention, public comment. Next is the roll call. Director Gellner, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Schwabey. Commissioner Sorenson.
Here.
Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Chair Stockton.
Here.
Commissioner Severson.
Here.
Commissioner Elg.
Here.
And Chair, please note that Commissioner Miriam is absent this evening.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any questions or proposed changes to the agenda? And if not, can I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. May I have a second?
Second.
Oh, you take it, Elg.
Okay, Elg. Thank you, Commissioner Elg. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the agenda is approved. Next, item four, we have the consent agenda and approval of the consent agenda. This evening, it consists of two items: A, approval of the meeting minutes of November 6, 2023, and B, approval of the Planning Commission report and recommendation for approval for PUD amendment and Shoreland Residential PUD slash CUP at 825 Mill Street East. Does any commissioner have any questions or comments on any item on the consent agenda or wish to pull for separate discussion or action? I have a note from the meeting minutes on page 14, line 45. Yeah, the last word, livable. I think if I said that, I don't know. I meant to be more shoppable. The context was talking about that being a shoppable area, so I think that was a typo.
Get noted, Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else have any changes or questions? Great. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Elg?
Thank you, Commissioner Elg. May I have a second?
Second.
Douglas? Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the consent agenda is approved. Right, next we have the public hearing items. This evening, we have one public hearing item, which is consider application for the fence variances at 728 Wayzetta Boulevard East. Who's walking us through this evening?
That'll be Planner Quarles, Chair.
Thank you, Planner Quarles.
Hello. Tonight, we'll be talking through one development application. It's for an existing fence at 728 Wayzetta Boulevard East. The owner is Stuart Bickel, and the applicant here in the audience with us is Lacey Bickel. The project is located right over here by City Hall, just off of Wayzetta Boulevard. And there's a pretty diverse mixture of land uses and land use designations, but for our purposes, this is in our 3A parcel, and it's guided Central Core Residential. Here's an aerial view for reference. The home sits sort of back in the corner of the lot. You can also see that there's a detached garage in the southeast corner. There's two front yards, which is a big part of this proposal. The Wayzetta Boulevard side is a front yard, and then the Chicago Avenue side is also a front yard. Here's a quick street view. The first is if you're standing on Wayzetta Boulevard and looking south, you can see the fence in question coming from the garage up to the house. And then, this second image is if you're standing on Chicago Avenue and looking west, this is that same fence. There's some additional fencing that looks the same on the other side of the house that I didn't have a picture of because that's a lot more visible from the private property instead of the public property. So, the history here is that this is a six-foot-tall, 100% solid fence. It was built in 2022, and it did not receive a fence permit. In all, it's too tall in the front and side yards. On that diagram, you can see that the front yard is in red. Like I said, the fact that it's on Wayzetta Boulevard and Chicago makes for a pretty big front yard. The yellow is the side yard. It's also too tall there. And then, in the rear yard, which is in green, it is actually an acceptable height because we allow six-foot-tall solid fences in the rear yard. We did go through the code enforcement process in 2022, late 2022, and this year. That took a little bit, just because the owner, I believe, spends time both here and in another state, so getting in contact with them at first took a little bit longer than we wanted. Once we were able to get in touch with them, the owner chose to pursue a variance for the existing fence in order to keep it, rather than modifying the fence to bring it into compliance. So, there are two variances here. The first is for the fence in the front yard. The applicant is requesting that the fence be two feet taller, and can you guys still see it on your screen?
Yes.
Great. The applicant is requiring that the fence is two feet taller and 25% more opaque than what is allowed in code. Typically, in front yards, we only allow fences to be four feet tall and 75% opaque. That's part of those fence change, fence code changes that we made earlier this year. And the fence today is obviously six feet tall and solid. In the rear yard, a little bit more complicated here. We kind of have two options in the, sorry, in the side yard. You can either have a fence that's six feet tall and 75% solid, so you can have a taller fence, but you have to be able to sort of see through it from other properties. Or you can have a solid fence, but it has to be shorter. The idea just being that you should be able to see over the fence, and we shouldn't be creating this sort of fortress-like quality around the houses in town. But you can't have both, so you can't have a fence that's both six feet tall and solid. So, that's why this one's phrased a little differently. And again, that's that area within the yellow. As I mentioned, two options. The applicant, if they are approved, they do propose to add some landscaping on the Wayzetta Boulevard and the Chicago sides. Those are the sides that are the most visible from the public realm. There isn't any landscaping proposed on the west side of the property. That's because that butts right up to a driveway for another property, and that fence also sort of runs a lot closer to the property line, so tougher to fit that kind of landscaping in there. I did want to review really quick the difference in our fence regulations between a corner and a typical lot. We just went over how there's a lot of extra front yard for this one. On a typical lot, bonus points if you can guess which lot that is, it is in Wayzetta. You can see that the front yard is a lot smaller, a lot more linear, so front, move back to the sides, and then all the way in the rear. So, a lot of people in town are able to have a particularly tall, you know, six-foot-tall solid fence in that whole rear yard that they have available to them. But on a corner lot, that, that area is a lot smaller because we define it as it relates to the house. In terms of comments, the engineering department didn't have any comments. We did our standard letter notification, both us and the applicant, so neighbors within 500 feet would have gotten a letter. There is no neighborhood meeting required for variances. As of Friday, we had not received a public comment. As of today, we have. The neighbor to the west at 720 Wayzetta Boulevard submitted a comment to us. He noted that he was opposed for a couple reasons. He wanted, you know, notification that the fence was going to be installed and didn't get it. We don't typically notify people when fences are going in, but we do go through the permitting process, so the city does at least get to see it. He had some issues with the look of the fence overall, and wanted to note that the property owners have greatly improved the home and the property in many ways, but that the fence, in his opinion, detracts from those improvements. So, the questions in front of you are if this proposal is reasonable with the comp plan, are these variances reasonable, is the issue that the landlord are experiencing, is that because of the way that their lot is, or is that an issue that they've created? And then, would the variances alter the essential character of this neighborhood? And you have quite a bit of leeway in making that decision according to those criteria. So with that, once your discussion is finished, you'll make a motion to have us put together a Planning Commission report and recommendation of approval or denial on the application. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I think at this time, we move to have the applicant come and speak. Did I get that right? Okay, that's a lot of order. Thank you. Would you please come and state your name and address and your relationship to the property?
Madam Chair, I, and if staff, or if the commissioners have any questions for staff, you could entertain that, too. I don't want to take you.
I apologize for asking you to come up quickly. Do we have any questions for staff on this? Sorry.
I have a couple.
Yes.
No, go ahead.
Schwabey, thank you.
First of all, when were the guidelines made of how tall and how thick a fence had to be? How old is that regulation?
Our original guidelines on height and opacity are probably a couple, couple decades old at this point. I'm not entirely sure. We did modify those regulations earlier this year when we went over, went over the fence code, and what we did in that case was we allowed fences in the front yard to be a little bit taller. We went from 42 to 48 inches, and then we also allowed them to be a little bit more solid. We used to be at 50% solid, and now we're at 75.
Okay. And when you made those modifications, how did you feel that that would be in the best interest? Sorry.
Would be in the best interest of the community. What is the purpose of having regulations regarding fence height and opaqueness?
That's a good question. And it was, it was something that we ended up discussing extensively as a commission, but I think a big part of it had to do with, you know, the character of neighborhoods. Most of the, most of the properties along Wayzetta Boulevard and throughout Wayzetta, you can stand on the street and generally see houses. If you can't, it's typically because of some kind of natural screening, like trees or shrubs or something like that. It's fairly rare that we have pretty tall fences in the front yard that block that view, and when we do, it's either because they predate our, our fence code, or because they've received what used to be a conditional use permit under our old code and now is a variance.
Okay.
Commissioner Severson?
I had a similar question that, of Schwabey, but I, what, my understanding then, this fence would never have been in compliance, even with old regulations then?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Can you go back to that picture that shows the lot where the other fence is?
The corner lot comparison?
Yeah. How close, yeah, is that, is there a possibility to have landscaping along the west side of the fence there, or would that be on the neighbor's property, but there would be available to have landscaping on the east-west portion of the fence in the front?
I think possibly there could be some room within that yellow box there to add some landscaping, but not on the, not on the exterior of the fence as it gets closer to the rear, just.
Not on the driveway side?
Yep, that's another person's property.
Yeah.
I have a question. So this, this fence is six feet tall?
Yes.
And how tall is it on top of the retainer wall when you add that from sidewalk level? Do we know that measurement?
I'm not sure how high the retaining wall is. I'd guess maybe three, four feet.
So you're looking at a 10-foot from the sidewalk level?
But.
Including the retaining wall, essentially, if it's, if it's four feet?
Stepping back, sure.
Can you pull up that picture again that shows that was?
Do we know the distance between the retainer wall and the fence to allow for shrubbery? It looks like there's, yeah, it looks like there's a lot of shrubbery proposed here for my visual recollection of that space.
Give me just a moment to figure that out. I would guess maybe, maybe three or four feet. It's, it's interesting because the, the actual retaining wall is in the right-of-way, but the area on top of the retaining wall is more on their property, so I would say probably three or four feet.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff?
Yeah, I do have one more question.
Commissioner Severson?
Can you explain about the location of the, of the fence along the property line? And to address the neighbor's concern as well, he says that fences are usually located inside the property line. Is there any variance or anything that we need to consider as it relates to where the fence line is?
We don't have any regulations stating how close your fence should get to your property line. It's a good practice to keep it a little bit further off the property line. We do have a survey now as part of this application, and I can confirm that the fence is not on the other person's property. It's a little bit set in, but it is pretty close.
Okay. And then, when you look at it along the front and side yards, there's no regulations either around how far back, any setbacks on a fence, anything like that?
No, as long as the fence is on your property, that's all right.
Thank you. Great. Okay, there's no further questions at this time. I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record and your role, if you're an advisor or any part of the applicant's team, and yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Lacey Bickel. I live at 728 Wayzetta Boulevard East. I am the wife of the homeowner. We just recently got married. So I am the applicant, soon-to-be homeowner, but currently wife of homeowner Stuart Bickel.
Perfect. Thank you. Do you have anything to share with the commission about this application?
Yeah, absolutely. First and foremost, and I appreciate all of Valerie's time and help kind of putting this together. Again, I apologize that we did not pull a permit initially. We had a contractor put in the fence that does a lot of business out of state, doesn't do a lot of business in Minnesota. I kind of relied on them to lead me, whether, you know, I just kind of let them do their job, and I didn't double-check what the permits were. So, I apologize for that, and I know now we're kind of backtracking and trying to make up for that instance. So I appreciate your time in regard to that. I will say, the, the biggest piece I would like to note is that we definitely want it to be aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood. Our biggest items that were of concern and why we wanted to put in a fence were of safety and privacy. Obviously, Wayzetta Boulevard is a pretty busy street. I included some traffic counts, but obviously, there's a lot of foot traffic and vehicle traffic on that road. We also, across from Chicago Avenue, there's a large three-story office building, so a lot of people park on that street there as well. There's a lot of traffic in and out of employees. The way that the lot curves down from west to east, it's on a complete slope, so you'll see in some of the photos from street view, the home sits very high, kind of on top of this hill, and then the yard kind of slopes down from there. So, with being in our yard, we're pretty on display to every, and including that retaining wall, that kind of boosts the yard up a little bit. So we just felt with privacy and safety, we have a dog, we're starting to plan for a family of our own. We just felt that that was really important to us. We have no intention of selling this home. We bought it very specifically to live in Wayzetta. We love the area. We love the neighborhood, and that's why we moved here. But that said, we obviously want it to look aesthetically pleasing. We want it to benefit all those in the neighborhood. And that's why we included some of our landscaping plans as well. Happy to discuss that further if you had questions as far as what can kind of fit in that space. But that has always been an item on our plan. We never wanted to kind of have this blocked-off fence look, and we're just completely private. We want to make it look good. We feel that we've made a lot of improvements. I appreciate that one of our neighbors has noted that. We cleared out a ton of the yard. It was extremely overgrown, and I think possibly not even to code because it was growing over the sidewalk with trees and shrubs and things like that. So, we're slowly working on getting it all put together, and we felt that the fence would be a benefit to not only us, but to the neighborhood as well, and just safety, privacy, and all of those things. But yeah, happy to take questions, happy to explain further in whatever you guys are interested in.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioners, do we have any questions for the applicant about their fence?
Are the timbers in the retaining wall currently there, or is that part of the overall landscaping plan?
The, the actual retaining wall, the wood?
Wood, yeah.
That's what's currently there.
It is.
And that was there.
Currently there, and there's nothing planted on it at this time?
No. And that was there when we purchased the home.
Do you have a question?
Yes, Commissioner Schwabey.
When you purchased the home, was there any fencing, or was it totally unfenced?
There was not. I know prior to, and I, I don't have a year, but I've seen in old photos, there was a fence on a portion of the property at one time. However, when we purchased the home, there was no fence.
Okay. I have a question. Do you know when they put the fence in, did they use footings or anything, like concrete footings to stabilize?
Yes.
Good. Okay, well, if there are no further questions of the applicant, then thank you very much for your time. And we would like to turn to the public hearing. Making sure I was staying on track here. Thank you. Great. Before we begin about the public hearing, I'd like to make a few comments. The public hearing is a time for us to listen to our community about the approved requests we're considering. It's an important part of the official process and allows the public to participate. Any questions asked during the public hearing will be held until the end of the hearing. It may be addressed by staff at that point. With that, with that said, I'd like to now open the public hearing for the consideration application for fence variances at 728 Wayzetta Boulevard East. Crickets. Anyone online?
No, Chair.
Wonderful. Since there's nobody, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Done? Great. Thank you. What's next? All right, I think now, if we've asked all the questions and we have some dialogue or thoughts on this application, maybe now's a good time to do that.
I'm sorry to do this. Can I ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, please, would you come back to the mic so that we can hear it on the television? Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't think of, I didn't think of this. I'm sorry. Getting your steps in. Okay, so let's say that you had pulled the permits. What would you have done?
In regard to what type of fence we would?
Yeah, like if you had known that this was.
Oh, sure.
Like, would you have built a compliant fence? And if so, what would that have looked like? Or would you be coming in front of us asking for a six-foot-five? Just kind of curious.
I understand your question. I would be here in front of you asking for two variances in order to put in a fence that is styled the way that the fence.
Okay, so this is your, this is your vision? This is what you?
This is our desired fence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant? Great, great questions. Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to sort of begin dialogue and their thoughts on what we have before us?
Well, I understand the plight, the question here. I've driven by, I've looked at the photos. I didn't particularly think it was unattractive. And the fact that it's a huge side yard and there really isn't a backyard, I mean, it's like, where are our kids going to play? You know, they have to have a place to play. And I understand the concern of safety. I understand the issue of the traffic. That is a significant volume. And, you know, this would have potential to, to have some reduction in traffic noise as well as, you know, block some of that visually from the yard. The landscaping proposed, I think, does a nice job of softening the appearance of the fence. Yeah, I mean, short of telling them to take 25% of the boards out to be closer to compliant, I, I don't have any objection with this fence where it's at. It seems like a pretty well-designed way to approach fencing on that piece of property. So, I understand the plight, and I, I, I think they make a good case about the shape of the property being challenging and the circumstance under which they live with all of that traffic as being, you know, it's not something they can do anything about. They have to live with that traffic. So, I, I, I am in favor of these two variances.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Elg. Anyone else like to share some thoughts?
I would like to share a thought.
Yes, Commissioner Schwabey?
I drive down Wayzetta Boulevard East quite often, and I have to say that every time I'm coming down that street, I'm a little shocked when I see that, all that fencing. I mean, I, I was actually surprised when I saw this, and I went, wow, that's the house. I always am wondering why there is such a huge barrier there. So, to me, it is distracting. And I think that when you have regulations, rules like that, it's really important to stick with them because other people also see, who live in the neighborhoods, what is going on and how high it's allowed and how, how opaque it's allowed to be. But I think that it would be just as beautiful of a fence, because it, I think it's pretty, it's good color, it matches everything, particularly looks good with all of the landscaping around it. But I think that if it were two feet shorter or less opaque, it would be, it would fit in better with the community. To me, it's a, it's a jarring thing when I see it, and I've noticed it at least, I can't say how many times, several times, as I've gone down the street.
Thank you.
So, anyway, that's my point of view.
Thank you for your thoughts. Any other commissioners have some thoughts to share? No?
Sure. Well, initially, reading the application, it seemed reasonable, and it seemed there were enough unique circumstances that it probably made sense. And I, I do appreciate the concerns you have about noise and safety and having a family there. And I know your intentions are good, and you seem to be a very good neighbor. I think the fact that the house sits above, or the, the yard that you were talking about sits above the street is a good thing for noise and safety. And I also think this is a good example of why we have a fence ordinance. I think, you know, if you look at the criteria again, does it enhance the character and diversity and livability of the neighborhood, and does it affect the character of the, of the surrounding area? So, like Commissioner Bonnie, the fence, you know, to me, does catch your eye when you go by. I mean, if you drive all up and down Wayzetta Boulevard from Central Avenue all the way to the golf course, which I did several times recently, with this in mind, it's the only situation along Wayzetta Boulevard that appears this way. And it does catch your eye, and it does, I think it just, it's a, I think we have to be careful about our precedence. And to me, it's something that I, you know, I'm empathetic, the fact that you have yourself in this situation. But I think our job as commissioners is to kind of look at what's best for the community and the neighborhood and the effect of what we're talking about here. And, and the other thing, I think, if you, if, if you change the fence so it's in compliance, there's a lot of opportunity with greenery to really create and deal with some of the issues that you're concerned about with shrubbery and a hedge, or whoever you go about it. And I think that would be much more consistent with what you see up and down Wayzetta Boulevard and in that neighborhood. So, you know, I think I'm inclined to make sure we enforce the ordinance that we have in place.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson. Commissioner Douglas?
Unlike some of our commissioners, I've never noticed the fence.
Unlike some of our commissioners, I've never noticed the fence when I've driven by, until somebody at a meeting last Monday night said, what are you going to do about the fence request you have on your agenda next week? And I said, well, I hadn't looked at the agenda yet. I have mixed feelings about this. I, after we approved a fence on Bushway on the west side, the farthest south house, I said, no more fences. It's a solid fence and I was very upset about that. But, on the other hand, I don't know if any of you are here, other than our attorney. We did have a variance on the north side of Wayzata Boulevard, two blocks west. And there's a large retaining wall, about six feet tall, and we allowed a six-foot fence. And there's Arbor Vady Solid in front of it. Do you remember that one? Now, that's a side yard.
When was that?
And it's solid. When was that? Three years ago? A little more. And it was a builder, wasn't it? Somebody in town or real estate or something? I can't remember now. Yeah, we won't talk about it. We had a lot of discussion on this one, I remember. And I drove by it again today and referred to it. You can't see the fence because there's so much ever, there's so much landscaping in front of it. And similar to what you show in your diagram here, the, the evergreens. So, I have mixed feelings. I drove by once again before our meeting and right as I was pulling into the neighbor's driveway to the west of you, a big bus just stopped right in front of me. It's right in front of your house. So, I can understand that factor. I guess if I were to approve it, I would ask to appease the neighbor that you do some landscaping, at least on the front fence. The east-west part of that fence. I know it's too close to the driveway, that's why I asked that question. I haven't made up my mind yet. I want to hear more comments.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, I, I would say I'm, I'm mixed on this one as well. I also face Wayzata Boulevard. I'm not on Wayzata Boulevard, I'm on a furnished road, but I understand the noise and the traffic and the, the extra kind of, you know, publicness of being on a more public road. So, I'm sympathetic in that regard. But I am also not inclined to build a fence all across my front yard. Now, I'm also torn because you do still see the, the house, which I think goes to the, the neighborhood. I'm actually looking at the picture of, on Google Maps here. But it is a jarring fence. It's a, it's a lot of just fence. And so, we just spent a lot of time over the last year putting in a fence ordinance for a reason as well. So, we want to honor that process. And so, I think if, I, I, I think we need to be in compliance. And I also don't love the fact that the, and I know it was your builder, but I'm not in love with the fact that they put it up without checking first. So, we have a fence ordinance for a reason, so I'm inclined to want to be in compliance with that.
Can I just point out, we created the variance process so that people can make their case to do things outside of being compliant. So, you know, I think it's wrong for us to just say flatly, every fence has to be in compliance. That's why we have a variance process. And the variance process includes them making their case around the uniqueness of the lawn and other circumstances like traffic and things of that nature that make the fence desirable. So, you know, I, I just think it's important to keep that in mind. We are allowed to bestow the ability to do something outside of what the ordinance says in certain conditions. I think in, in terms of the jarring nature, yeah, it's probably a little jarring right now. But I think with the landscaping, it will look a lot softer. I will say, however, given that the property does slope up, you can see that on Chicago Avenue, you know, six foot right next to the garage, and then it kind of steps up, up, up towards the corner and it constantly goes up. So, that does make a case that from the street level, if somebody's walking by a four-foot fence, they still probably wouldn't be able to look into the yard. It still probably would be taller than most individuals walking by. You know, so that's certainly an option. But I'm just, you know, they're making a case that traffic is, is a concern for safety and noise. That this is really their only yard. They don't have a typical, traditional backyard like that other image we saw. So, I'm just saying that, you know, there are, you can make the case that this would be desirable for the homeowner.
Thank you, Commissioner Elg. So, I, I live on the 101 and I have a fence in my backyard. The fence was designed within the regulations at that time. And one of the ways to avoid, can we put up the slide without the proposed hedges? One of the ways to contend with a large sort of wall-like surface is to undulate the fence in and out, which is what ours does, to allow for deeper plantings in different areas. And the, there is some uniqueness to the site as, as, as I see it. The uniqueness would be the three-story office building next door. But quite frankly, I think any height of a fence is, that's not going to really help with privacy from that perspective. Safety is always a concern, but that's why we have the six-foot tall fence regulation. So, I don't know that safety of a six-foot fence, or sorry, the fence that would be proposed for this sort of height in this area would be any less safe because you also have the added retaining wall height. So, I feel that the, that the, the, the height of the retaining wall kind of adds to that aspect. It adds to the sort of safety. When I, when I look at it, it is pretty dominant as it stands. And, you know, three years ago, the thing that you referenced was three years ago, and I did sit in on a long agenda item, many agenda items that we kind of go through as a city, right? When we kind of prioritize what we can spend time and resources on, and one of them was fences. So, we spent time within the last year to sort of look through and sort of make a lot of, we put a lot of thought into how fences should be and why there should be opacity and why there should be certain heights. And the reason, some of the reasons that I recall, and I'm sure there's more that aren't coming to mind, is just for the sense of connection with community and not the sense of kind of feeling like you're walled in or out of any particular area. And that the heights we set were meant and intended to consider the safety. And the opacity was meant to, again, give that, give that sense of, you know, we're not living in sort of boxed-in areas. And when you have a solid fence of this nature, it kind of, it kind of, you know, creates that very walled feeling. But again, it is on a busy, busy street. So, I can see, I can see some of the variance, but when you add in the retaining wall, and I just walked there the other day and I, I was immediately struck by this tall structure that was over me. And it did feel very off-putting, quite frankly. And that's not the sort of vibe we want in our city. And I think we wouldn't want to replicate that vibe. And even though that's a good data point, Commissioner Douglas, but it precedes the recent sort of efforts we've made to draw a sort of consensus about how we want to address the fences. And the, the reality is, as the slope goes up towards the house, the fence gets higher and higher. So, it does feel, it feels pretty ominous from that perspective, in, in my opinion. So, it has a couple of things working against it. Another concern that I had was wind. Because when you have a large, long, tall structure, wind can become an issue in terms of toppling it over. But it was nice to hear that footings were installed, which is not always done. I don't know how deep they are or how, you know, what the nature is, but that would be like a concern. So, yeah, with the added, I think, I think if it was a, a flat lot or a lot that didn't have the added height of the, the retainer wall, you know, the variance seems more reasonable because you're dealing with a sidewalk level, you're dealing with the sidewalk-level pedestrian atmosphere of connection. And at that, at, at sidewalk level, you would say, oh, yeah, and maybe we need to think about how we're going to do plantings and maybe there's a height variance here. When you add the retainer wall and you have, I'm not sure, didn't feel like there's a lot of space between the retainer wall and the actual fence for plantings, although the plantings that you did show there, if they were completely done in that fashion, would definitely help with the aesthetics. So, you know, it's a little bit of a, I don't know what contract you had with your construction person who did the fence to, you know, typically, these guys check with city ordinances. I mean, I, they should have done so. And if they were professional, that, that would have been the first sort of port of call is to contact the city. So, that's a contractual relationship where you may be able to go back to them and have that discussion should the county, the commission feel that there's enough data that supports some sort of alteration, unless the council, the commission feels that there's enough data to support the unique lot. It is a busy road. We, we all want to keep our kids and pets safe. Does anyone have any follow-up based on what I've just said to kind of debate that out a bit more? Thank you, Commissioner Schwalbe.
Well, I really appreciate what the Bickles have done to clean up the property after they got it. And I think they're going to be very good Wayzata residents. We have a wonderful community and we're so glad that the Bickles are here. But I think that for the community and what is best for our city, it would be better if that fence were two feet lower. Because, like I said, I've driven by it many times and been startled almost by it. And if I am, some other people must be. And I would prefer to have us stay inside of our ordinance in this case.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to when I lived abroad, I had a fence on a very busy road and we were required to have complete green on any type of, complete green coverage on any type of a solid fence. And in addition, you know, we put, to get the height we wanted, we put plantings on the interior of the fence for the same aesthetic appeal and also to get additional height. So, there's other ways around sort of height, I think. And I, what I wouldn't want to see for sure is post-making a lot, putting a lot of thought and time of city staff and folks on the, whatever task force it was that went over the fences. What I wouldn't want to see is this to set precedent for somebody else to also want this type of fence, because it would become a pretty unfriendly Boulevard. And one of our objectives on the comp plan is to create a walkable, friendly atmosphere. And I'm, I'm not, I would have thought that the slope height would actually be an advantage to the property instead of a, because you're higher then, so it's more difficult for people to look in given the height of the slope and the retainer wall. So, I don't see that as uniquely adding to the reason for a variance. And I'm sympathetic to the situation, however, because no one likes to redo things that of this nature.
Yeah, I would say the other thing I would say is, imagine if we had a fence like that along all of Wayzata Boulevard. I mean, I'm having a hard time kind of coming to terms with that, right? I'm, I'm just kind of looking at our, at our Boulevard, especially in those couple of blocks between, you know, say Superior and Broadway or Berry, where there's a lot of homes close to the street. There's a lot of, you know, yards right there. There's a lot of people walking up and down, a lot of families, you know, in theory, who could be buying homes there. Imagine if every home had a fence like this covering all of that. And, and again, I, I'm sympathetic, you know, I, I also face Wayzata Boulevard, but I wouldn't want to see just fence after fence after fence all along the road. And, and as I look at other properties, there is a lot of ground cover, a lot of fencing, natural fencing. There's a lot of trees and shrubs and that's just such a much more appeasing look. If you had a shorter fence or a more opaque, less opaque fence, but filled in with green, I think that that would be a much more pleasing, much more pleasing look.
Yeah, I'm peering, I'm peering over on your screen. You have the cemetery with the stone. That's a tall retaining wall. Like, if there was a fence on there, that would be, it would feel like you were in a moat or something, if it were there. But also, you know, the city's doing a lot. There's the, recently, there's the Wayzata Corridor study, where the city is putting a lot of thought and effort into creating a, helping crack down on speed and managing traffic flow through the city by redirecting certain traffic streams. So, you know, it's, it's, although over time, city streets always get busier, there is a very strong effort and plan in place to continue to monitor and help with traffic flow in this, in this exact area and the area that I'm on. So, I'm excited about that.
Could you go back to the images with the front, side and backyard? So, if this, if this fence were in compliance in all three areas, the pink area would have to be no taller than 48 inches and 75% solid. The yellow area could be 48 inches, 100% solid. And the green area, a very small section, could be six feet solid. So, if we deny these variances, that's what this homeowner will be left with adjusting to. So, it's not just taking it down to four feet in front. It'll need to become 75% solid and 25% see-through. So, I'm just, I'm making that point. I mean, it's probably, it's probably easily done. I mean.
It's a very good point.
You know, but that's a large portion there that will need to be 48 inches, 75% solid. And to my point earlier, if you're down on the street, you know, it's, it'll still look pretty tall.
Right.
Even at 48 inches, so.
Exactly.
I am, you know, I'm being persuaded somewhat. Like everyone here, we're sympathetic. You know, I wish there was a happy in-between where it could be four feet and solid in the, in the pink area, you know?
Well, maybe that's a variance we would approve, I don't know.
I think that, you know, could give them the privacy that they, you know, might like in their yard, but.
Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Elg, for your comments. We have a question for staff by Commissioner Douglas. Is that okay?
Looking at this diagram, why is the area behind the house, the back line of the house, in pink? Why is it considered front yard?
The way that it ends up getting set up is if you stand on Wayzata Boulevard and look at the house, there's one front of the house. And if you stand on Chicago and look at the house, there's another front of the house.
The side of the house is considered the front of the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, because it's on the corner.
Because it's a corner lot.
It's on the corner.
Uniqueness.
But, so, wouldn't it just be, so the whole lot then, from front to back, is considered front? Not just where the house is, to the back of the house from the street? You know what I'm saying? No, you don't. It doesn't make any sense, does it?
No, it does. It's, if you're standing on Wayzata Boulevard, you can see clear through to the other property line and it's still the front, right? Is that what you're saying?
So, if they want to fence in, could they see that where the back west point, that would be south? Where the green starts, could they go over from there to the property line, come across the back? across the back to the garage, and then from the garage over to the back of the house, fence that in?
They could, but once you get into those yellow spots and those sort of red-pink zones, it has to get shorter and less opaque as you move in.
It has to be shorter.
Yep, because you're getting closer to Chicago.
Yeah. It just seems, it's an unusual lot. It's a very unusual lot.
Well, it is an interesting thought whether or not we enforce the four feet, but maybe grant a variance for the opacity. It's just a thought.
Commissioners Sorensen?
I mean, just to clarify, that the yellow, the side lot, to be in compliance could also be six foot, but nor, nor more than 75% solid.
Yes. Or it could be four feet and solid.
Or, yeah, or four feet and solids. So at least you get some height back there.
So the biggest issue really is quite a lot of front yard.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I wish some of you had seen that other fence that I'm speaking of on Wayzata Boulevard, and I agree, I don't want Wayzata Boulevard all fenced in. I noticed some of them had wrought iron fencing, and there were other kinds of fences, but I wish you could have seen where it's solid landscaping. You don't even know there's a fence there.
But we can't control that in the future, whether or not someone's going to plant this type of thing or a column and make them solid. You just don't know that.
The thing is, this fence does stand out as unique on this road. Like, there's not another fence like it, really, and...
Another lot like it, maybe?
Well, there's that too. Well, I don't know if there's that.
There are corner, corner.
I mean, well, we, like, everybody has, I mean, let's, let's just take a moment and say, like, everybody has a part, everybody on Wayzata Boulevard has some part of their property facing Wayzata Boulevard, and so what I'm just saying is, there's no fence like this where, existing where you would say, oh, okay, like, I'm going to put up this because it's already there. And so the second we do that, somebody else is going to say, oh, there's something there. And the city, to my knowledge, doesn't retroactively go around enforcing, changing fence guidelines. So once a guideline is passed, we don't go back in time and like walk around the neighborhood and pull down fences. So, um, what's my point about that? My point is that, like, there's a point in time when the code changes, and there's a point in time when people start to comply, and both of those point in times have already occurred. So, like, is there a grace period for understanding fences? I don't, I don't, I don't know. But I, I'm, look, I'm, I'm concerned about allowing something to be permitted and that we've spent a lot of time and effort, for good reason, to not have happen, and so I don't know how we solve the problem for the applicant or if that is our job essentially, but what is our job is to sort of give feedback as to what, what doesn't work and why. And, um, yeah, I think, unless I'm wrong on that.
I guess if I were to give guidance to the applicant, uh, because it sounds like this variance isn't likely to pass tonight, I would say come back with another variance request asking for four feet solid on all of the front yard. That would at least give some pri, more privacy and safety, uh, and then you can still plant the arborvitae's, which will give you the height. It, it might be a good, um, middle ground.
So, yeah, it's always hard when you, you sort of end up in a spot that's kind of a pickle, and you've done your best to, um, you know, do what you need to do for yourself and hire someone to go ahead and do it. But I, I do think that we probably have spoken enough about this and the potential for somebody here to propose a motion. Is there anybody who has?
I can make a motion. Is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I am. Thank you for being more direct than me.
I move that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare a draft Planning Commission report and recommendation reflecting a recommendation of denial of this application for review and ad, and adoption at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorensen. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion passes. The draft report and recommendation will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting, and after adoption, we'll go onto the city council for further consideration. Thank you to the applicant, staff, for tonight's meeting and information. Next, we have other items. Director Gellner, do we have a, a review of development activities and updates on the meeting schedule?
Yes, I intend on canceling the meeting on December 4th. I'll send the official notice tomorrow. I have no immediate agenda items that need to be addressed on December 18th, and so I'm inclined to cancel that meeting as well. I will let you know soon. If you need notification of that sooner, please reach out to me individually. And then the 2024 calendar is now available, and we included that in your packet. There are some odd dates due to holidays and also due to several elections. I believe we have five elections in this room in 2024, for a variety of reasons. You can read that on the calendar, which type of elections they are, so please look carefully at the 2024 dates and block your calendar. Do not assume it's just the first and third Monday in 2024. We do have some oddities, um, so please take a look at that. And then I think we did, you know, we moved quite a few things around, so just take a look at that and let me know if you have any absences. We'll still have two meetings every month, but they have kind of a different configuration. It was, our clerk really struggled with the calendar this year due to those five elections, where we need to have the room free. We'll make the liaison schedule for the council meetings as soon as we have our appointments done, and, um, if you need to know soon or you can't do the first January meeting, you can always swap with someone as well. So, um, appointments are still open right now until November 28th. You can apply to be reappointed, and then we will have one open seat for sure, so please let people in the community know if they're interested in being a planning commissioner. They need to apply by eight days from now, November 28th, and they can find our application on the website. You could Google applications, or you can look at our website.
Do existing commissioners have to reapply at the end of the term?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Please reapply for your appointment. We look forward to hopeful reappointments, yes.
Are you?
For those whose term is up. And I have notified you if your term is up, so, um, if you didn't receive anything or you have a question about when your term ends, please let me know, and I can clarify.
Wonderful, thank you. Director Gellner, thank you very much. We can move on to adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for your participation in this evening's meeting. This concludes all items on the agenda. Can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Seferson. May I have a second?
Second, Schwabey.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion passes in the Monday, November 20th, 2023. Wayzata Planning Commission meeting is adjourned.